Because we have open forum at our meeting on our agenda, the school committee does not have open forum on their agenda. So we are going to go through open forum and then will the school committee will open their meeting. Okay. Madam Clerk, will you lead us with the prayer and the pledge, please? Roll call, please.
Yeah.
Here.
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 Here. Open forum pursuant to run on general law forty-two dash forty-six dash six. Currently, we have three people on the list for open forum. Once we exhaust the list, I'll ask the audience one more time if there's anybody that wants to be heard. So right now, we're going to give everybody three minutes, and then we'll take it from there. First on the list is Mary Samini. No.
Good evening. My name is Mary Samini, and I reside at one seven one Great Road in North Smithfield. I'm here to speak on the proposal to enlarge the parking lot at North Smithfield High School and to install solar mounted roofs, panels. I went over the zoning ordinances and zones regarding the town of North Smithfield, and I am quoting directly from our zoning board review and our zoning rules and regulations. Section one, provision for official zoning map and ordinance. The official map shall be located in the office of the town clerk, and that shall be the final authority as to the current zoning status of land and water areas, buildings, and other structures of the town. Section five, district use and regulations. The town of North Smithfield is divided into eleven zoning districts, four residential, three business, two mixed-use, one manufacturing, and one open space. In addition, there are three overlay districts, which I'm sure you are aware of, the groundwater aquifer, historic, and solar. It is noted that the overlay district use regulations shall take precedence over the regulations of any underlying zoning districts. Each of the overlay zoning districts established by the provisions of this ordinance was created with a specific intent as follows. As far as the groundwater aquifer protection overlay system or the GAAP, this overlay district shown on the North Smithfield Groundwater Aquifer Protection Overlay District of 2012 on file in the office of the town clerk and includes all lands in the town identified as groundwater reservoir, groundwater recharge area, and town-owned, non-transient, non-community wellhead protection area, which includes all schools. And that is established to fulfill the purpose of section nine, groundwater protection overlay district. As far as open space, the district includes properties owned by the town, state, or federal government presently used for public recreation or conservation purposes. It includes quasi-public or privately owned land where development rights or conservation easements have been conveyed or for which there is a reasonable expectation of long-term use for open space conservation or recreation, such as the Audubon Society or the North Smithfield Land Trust. Certain limited residential recreational agricultural or educational uses are permitted. As far as section five-three, interpretation of use tables and symbols. The statutes of uses which appear on the table of the district use regulations vary from district to district as indicated by the symbol appearing under the appropriate column heading. The interpretation of symbols will be as follows: Y, use is permitted by right. S, use may be permitted as a special use under the provisions of section nineteen point two-two of the ordinance. Yes, with an asterisk, that use shall be permitted under provisions of this ordinance for a limited time as customarily appropriate to the use, not to exceed one year. And N, use is not permitted. If you look at the attached table, which I have here in my notes, under open space, which the recreation area is, roof-mounted solar systems are not allowed. Ground-mounted solar systems are not allowed, or ground-mounted solar systems for commercial use are not allowed. So under all of those provisions, solar panels should not be allowed in open space areas to protect open space. Section five-three, where any proposed use is not listed in this section or in section twenty-one definitions, it shall be the duty of the zoning enforcement officer to determine if the use is substantially similar to any existing use. If the officer determines that the proposed use is not substantially similar to any existing use, it shall be prohibited in all zones. Any decision of the zoning officer pro or con is appealable to the zoning board. Uses listed in the following table may also be governed by the groundwater aquifer and historic overlay district or the provisions of section eight, flood hazard areas. Any uses of materials having a health hazard rating of two, three, or four, or a flammability rating of one, two, three, or four as defined by the NFPA shall require a special use permit. Lastly, if we are to consider the allowance of green development to install a roof-mounted solar system in this town, I want to be assured that the town council will have this developer contractor apply for and be permitted for this project as all other contractors must do. It's my understanding that this is not part of the solar overlay district, and as such, he should go through proper procedures. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Gerton.
Hello. Thank you for affording me the opportunity to speak here tonight. I appreciate it. I'd just like to take, Tony Gerton, Eight Country Way. I'd just like to take a few minutes here, I'll be brief, to address some of the noise I've heard in town in relation to solar project and the parking lot. I guess first point I would bring out is if solar panels themselves are unsafe, why are they allowed anywhere, in North Smithfield or otherwise? And beyond that, I would hope the elected leaders of North Smithfield pursue their duty to explore any possible projects that could benefit the town of North Smithfield, our students, and our taxpayers. So I was included in the group that looked at increasing that lot size a few years back. This is not a new concept we're talking about here. This is something a developer brought to the table. So it's been talked about for a long time, and the reason it's been talked about for a long time is because people recognized it's a deficiency, and I'll speak to that. At the time, it was decided that, as usual, there's no funding. So they didn't move forward with anything. I personally have also been in the life safety business for many years. And a big part of the life safety business is limiting liability. I think I've seen some liability here in North Smithfield. For instance, the path we have from the parking lot right outside this building to the parking lot up by Veterans Memorial Stadium was a Band-Aid. It was a temporary fix when it was implemented by Superintendent Lindberg years ago. It was meant to be a temporary fix. It's not paved, it's not lit well, it's not ADA, handicapped accessible. So for anyone to consider that parking here will work for the fields up there or at the high school is a mistake. And it's a mistake that could lead to potential liability if someone get hurt. Beyond that, parking lot on Providence Pike, in my opinion, is very dangerous, and I've witnessed it. When you get out of a game, it's dark out in the middle of fall, and accidents have happened in the past. I think, Council of Adney, you could speak to that. In fact, I think a lawsuit was filed at one time for someone who got hurt going into a car that was parked on Providence Pike, and well, that speaks to the danger. So I hope what we're going to hear here tonight is a potential project that can provide power to lights, concessions, bathrooms. We now have a concession stand in the bathroom at Veterans Memorial Stadium at potentially no charge to taxpayers and additionally potentially safely lighting the parking lot up there, which is also quite dark. So Green Development did a tremendous job with the concession stands and bathrooms. Why not hear them? Public-private partnerships are not a unique concept, and shouldn't the council and the school committee look at what's best for North Smithfield and leave petty politics and vitriol out of the equation? I think so. We're obviously in an election cycle. The same naysayers who lobbied against the concession stand in bathrooms are now looking for a new target to take aim at. Don't let them. Listen to what's best for the town. Listen to what's best for the students. Listen to what's best for life safety. Please, listen to any presentation with an open mind and consider what's best for North Smithfield and not what it might look like on Facebook pages dedicated to enraging North Smithfield. I'll leave you with this. Apple's headquarters in California, the Tesla factory, MetLife Stadium in New York, Safeco Field in Seattle, Mercedes-Benz Stadium in Atlanta, the Staples Center in Los Angeles, the Indianapolis Motor Speedway, Yellowstone National Park, the Eiffel Tower, the Vatican, the Taj Mahal, and our White House. All those sites have solar installations helping to power their facilities. Where did this miss the opportunity to improve life safety and increase capacity in a parking lot in North Smithfield? This taxpayer and voter certainly hopes not. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Gianfresco.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Robert Gianfresco, and I live at four seventy-five Greenville Road, which is right around the corner here. I also am a board member with Northman Hoops. Northman Hoops runs a summer league here on Mondays and Tuesdays, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, according to the weather. If there is any type of other activity, a soccer game, lacrosse, the parking is just unbearable. Now, that parking lot that's near Memorial Field has three handicap spots, which is for the amount of parking space that we have. Imagine your mother coming to see your son play basketball and her have to walking up that path. Imagine going to a football game and not having enough parking, and someone has to walk from down here or from the street. I think the people who may be against this don't attend any activities at the field and don't see the hazard and how it would help. As a professional electrician for the last thirty-five years, I want to speak about solar. I have solar on my roof. I used to own a solar company before I got hurt. And what's going there is not rooftop solar. It's pole-mounted solar. It's going over a parking lot, so it will not damage any open space. It will not damage any groundwater. It will not do any of the soil. Much of solar panels that do have an issue with the groundwater, it's because of the shingles, water running off in the shingle fiber, fabric, going into the groundwater. Rain is rain. Solar panels are not hazardous, because if they were, they wouldn't be on my house. I wouldn't endanger my family. I wouldn't have sold it and installed it for many years. That is a recreational area, but I think the way the ordinance is written, it's not that type of recreational area, from my opinion. As a former electrical inspector in the city of Providence, it was my job to interpret the code and such. I think under this manner that was brought up a little while ago, the solar doesn't fit that. But I do agree, proper channels should be going to. I'd like to thank all of you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Is there anybody else out there that would like to be heard during open forum at this time? Sir? If you just please state your name and address.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Charles Repose. I live at three ninety-nine Central Street in North Smithfield. I have two student athletes that go to the school. I use the facility quite a bit. And added parking would be a great benefit. A year and a half ago, I shattered my left patella, and I couldn't walk. I was in a wheelchair. And since it was an accident, I really didn't have time to get a placard or any of that stuff, and there's only limited spaces there for that anyway. So it was really challenging to get to the games for me. There was a couple incidents where the, you know, police department was very helpful and let me park in the handicap when it was available. But a lot of times, I would get dropped off at the gate, and, you know, my wife would park up on the side of Route Five, which is very dangerous, hopping up a curb and coming out of there. It's not like we don't know people don't speed down Route Five. So added parking would be a great benefit. To me, it's like a no-brainer. Anytime we can invest in something facility-wise in this city, town, I should say, for these kids, so they can have, you know, so everybody can come see the games. You know, there was times where I took my, their grandparents, and that was always an issue, because we'd have to drop them off and park down here. It's not enough parking for the size facility that we have, and it's a beautiful place. Now, we actually have bathrooms, which is great. Try telling your seventy-two-year-old grandmother she's got to use a portage on. You know, it's no bueno. But, you know, we got this beautiful facility. I think we should treat it the way, you know, added parking would just be a benefit, you know, to the student athletes and to the town. If you haven't attended a graduation there, I mean, God bless you, you're trying to find a place to park. And you'll end up parking way up at the high school and walking in. And that's good for some people. I don't think it's good for everybody. And as far as the solar part of this thing, my experience with solar is I used to be installer. I used to do solar fields. You know, going back about ten years when it first started coming out, it got really big, and I installed a ton of fields, mostly in Massachusetts. And my experience with that is, you know, we did plot out the land and we did clear it, but if we didn't maintain those places, Mother Nature took it right back. So, and I also have solar on my roof. And for me, living in North Smithfield where I don't have gas, electric bills is a big deal when you have an electric house. And for me, it brought my electric bill down from like six hundred bucks a month to two hundred. So it's a no-brainer. You know, the benefits of solar outweigh, I think, even the environmental concerns. Everybody wants more power, but nobody wants to dig for more coal. Nobody wants to, you know, frag for more gas. Something's got to give. I don't know with you, but I want to keep my lights on. So that's really all I have to say about the subject. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else that would like to be heard for open forum at this time? No? Okay, we'll move on then. Chairman Lombardi, would you like to open your meeting at this time?
I would. So I'll call the North Smithfield School Committee meeting of August twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-two to order. Clerk, please call the President.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Unless there's an objection, we have done the pledge of allegiance. And so we can move on to the presentation by Green Development LLC for solar carport and expansion of the parking lot.
Thank you. For the record, John Mancini on behalf of Green Development, and I want to acknowledge the town council and members of the school committee, and I appreciate the opportunity that you've given Green Development to come before you with this proposal, which is a unique project. It is, as I heard one of the earlier speakers indicate, a joint partnership, an opportunity for a corporate citizen to actually contribute to a municipality and hopefully meet the need of that municipality. And you're going to hear from Hannah Marina, who is our development coordinator, to describe the benefits of what's being proposed. And before we go into the details, we've analyzed this from a couple of different perspectives, and you'll hear it more detailed from Green Development, from Hannah, through the PowerPoint presentation that addresses several issues. And the issues that are going to be addressed, primarily the location, the technology, and importantly, the cost savings to the town as well as the service to be provided to the town. And we're prepared to address any questions or concerns that the school committee may have, the town council may have. We're willing to address all of your questions about process, about procedure, about implementation. Those that you don't hear tonight will be able to address further, but we think that the presentation will be comprehensive and should alleviate any concerns or issues with regards to how we want to implement it and how it can be done. Importantly, you know, Green is an important member of your community. It's going to be here for a while. It has a track record and is not in any way, shape, or form trying to circumvent the rules or the regulations. Whatever the process and procedure is, whatever the town deems it necessary to do, it will be done. And hopefully to the town's satisfaction. Otherwise, we're not able to proceed. It's just that simple. It's what we've done in the past. It's what we anticipate to do in the future. So with that, unless there's any questions specific with regards to anything of me, I'll turn it over to Hannah. She can walk you through the PowerPoint and kind of address some of the questions. I think probably best to see what we have to offer first, and then we'll take questions and concerns. So, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Hannah Marina. I'm the Director of Business Development from Green Development. We're very excited to offer you this proposal for expanded parking lot and solar-covered parking tonight. No, wait. Wait. How do I just go over or go down? Uh, got it. So the overall, the purpose of this proposal is to increase the capacity for onsite parking at your athletic complex. We will reduce or eliminate on-street parking for events, will improve access, and this will help especially during the events that were just mentioned, like large sporting events, graduations, things like that. This will improve the safety and traffic conditions here in Providence Pike. It will provide protection from inclement weather. So that means when it's hot or when it's cold, the solar structures will shade the parking below it. It will, we will, and Green Development, local company, you guys are familiar with us, we plan to own and operate the solar project. So our plan is to, our proposal is to double the spaces at the athletic complex from fifty-eight to a hundred and sixteen parking spots. This is an immediate benefit to the town, financial benefit of four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, which is the value of that expanded parking lot. Now, if you're comparing that to just a straight solar lease, so let's say you went out, had someone else did the parking lot, and we just paid lease payments for the solar, the solar lease is worth about two hundred and eight thousand dollars. This is an additional benefit to the town of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars over the forty-year lease. And that incremental benefit would actually be even higher if you factored in time of money, which we did not do here to keep things simple, but actually would be a little bit more than that. So in exchange for the upfront investment, we would be looking for the town to waive taxes, and the lease payment would be one dollar because all of the benefit is upfront in the essentially donating the expanded parking lot. So this is a rendition of what the parking lot looks like now on the left, and then the expanded parking lot on the right. Those lines are from our engineering software, and it's some of the underground wires there. Looks a little funny, but... So the doubling does not include the parking spots just to the left of the basketball courts. And so I have other people with me that will talk about their specific technical details, but the plan would be to seal code the entire parking lot afterwards. So here is the same, the expanded parking lot drawing with the solar canopy over the middle of the parking lot. It's about a two hundred kilowatt solar system, and the low end of the solar panels is about eighteen feet off the ground, so it's pretty high. And this is something that we've seen an interest in. It's a technology that the state, DEM, environmental groups are pushing for. They're pushing for solar projects on developed areas. They want to see, they want to see solar on parking lots, landfills, commercially zoned areas, those types of things. This is right in line with the state's current goals and with the current means to meet those goals. So this is just a couple of tables showing you some additional value. So the parking lot improvement would happen immediately in year one. Again, that value is four hundred and ninety-six thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars. And that would be, so this top table is to show that there would not be additional lease payments besides that. And then if you go down to the bottom table, this would show the difference. If we did not improve the parking lot and just paid the standard lease payment, you'd only be at the two hundred and eight thousand dollars. So that's why doing it altogether upfront is much more beneficial to the town. And this is a relatively small system. It's only two hundred KW, but it will provide sufficient shade for most of the parts of the parking lot. And so to answer the question earlier, so the electricity from this system would be going directly into the grid. We would own and operate it, and the electricity would be connected right to the utility company. I have printouts of all of this. We don't necessarily need to read everything, but this goes through detail, the full scope of our proposal. Were some of the important things, we mentioned the handicap parking signage, bringing you, making sure everything is up to code there. Install, you know, we would obviously install erosion controls. We would get any permits that are required for the project. And the goal of the additional parking lot is that everything would be blended in perfectly at the end. You would not be able to tell the difference. I can actually, I think it would probably be easier for everyone to just to read off of the handouts of this, if that makes more sense. Okay, I'm just going to go through these. So we're going to install the proposed erosion controls, tracking pads, dust control. We're going to commence any of the demolition work, so there will need to be tree removal, an offsite disposal of stump brush, any existing organic matter. We are going to remove the existing South Curb Island and the South End Curb line of the parking lot. We're going to remove the existing light fixtures and light pole bases in the existing island and salvage them for reuse by the town. We're going to strip and remove the existing topsoil from the existing island and then saw and then soft cut and remove the existing asphalt pavement that lies south of the island to be removed. When we're done with the demo work, we're going to perform cuts and fills on the site to achieve proposed grades and subgrades and haul of all excess materials offsite, estimated to be about 2,100 cubic yards. We're going to remove existing utility poles and overhead wire and relocate the underground electricity from utility pole 148 to the existing underground electrical duct bank that serves the new concession stand. We're going to design and install two new catch basins and associated pipe in a proposed new parking area and design and install an underground drainage system. We're going to furnish and install new precast concrete curbing in the proposed new parking area and place in compact a gravel base under the proposed pavement and sidewalk. We're going to do some fine grading work and asphalt paving work in the area and sidewalk areas and sell fabric and crushed stone in the new and existing portions of the center island in the parking lot. We're going to furnish and install 72 new six-foot ornamental trees and hydroseed the disturbed areas and furnish and install 122 feet of new chain link fence in the proposed area. Lastly, we're going to install new handicap parking signage, seal coat the existing asphalt pavement, and strike the entire parking lot. I'm happy to answer any questions or have some of my team answer any additional questions.
I have a question. I was writing it down, so that's that one first. So, you're saying that if we were going to do this ourselves and then lease out the space to a different, to a solar company, that the cost of the parking lot would be in excess of $400,000 to build that parking lot? And then, the revenue that we would generate over 20 years would be only under $300,000?
It would be, the revenue would be, for this exact size, solar project would be $208,000.
$208,000 over 20 years?
Forty years.
Forty years. Okay. Thank you.
Another question. So, would there be an additional entrance or exit out of this parking lot? And would there be a light? Because I don't see how we can get all this traffic out of the parking lot.
Did you hear that? I need some help answering these questions.
You got a PhD on that, I'm sure, from State, but I would envision if you're going to expand this, that you have one-way flow, one entrance, one exit.
Yeah.
To travel. There's going to be some access. Further up, where it's a road, it's more level, in the middle of the hill. So, they come in, the lower part, they go up, the new part, and that would be... Because there is no parking on the street.
Right.
We need to understand that. There is no parking. So, people are doing that. It's illegal. That was one of the things that we addressed, I think, a year ago. There is no parking on the street. Around 475 parking spaces down, and there isn't ADA compliant one-way to get to that field. We had to install that one. Well, I understand that people don't like, they're a field. And for some people, yes, it could be, it could be a major inconvenience to some folks. You know, it's something that wouldn't happen.
So, Hannah, the question was, will there be, is there a plan to put another entrance or exit in the new parking lot?
I think I did exactly what you looked at it. So, we discussed that in detail. We're going to do phase one. It would be again, the parking lot installed this year before the end of the season. And then we would do a road opening, curb commitment with the state, which would probably take us eight to 12 months to get that approved. And then we would come back and put the second exit out of the parking lot. So, the intent was to get the parking lot done before the fall, make all the instructions so you have the parking, and then submit to the DOT for an additional entrance. And then we would come back after that would be approved, which it would be. Just a lot of these applications right now at DOT. We have one that's 14, 15 months going for a curb cut. We don't see a problem getting it. We felt that we could get the parking spots built sooner and then drop after the other exits out. Or we could wait for that process to complete it and build it, not next year, but the following seasons. We felt that we'd be better off doing it in two phases. At no additional cost. We would just continue on the permitting of the second phase.
There was a second part to that question that I was asking too. Is there any, is there any looking into a traffic light for the exit or entrance?
We could look at a thing that there wasn't, we had no intention of putting traffic control out on that site out there. Really, this school doesn't have a lot. They want to do a full traffic study. You can look at it. It's not a continuous access like a mall or a place, you know, a housing development condos that people are coming in and out every day. So, it would be minimal. To put a light there would be more of a nuisance, I think.
Well, there's a light that works just during the events, so at least people can get in now, because there is a lot of traffic on the street.
No, I understand. That was not part of our proposal. You know, they could look at it. The proposal right now is basically for the parking lot to get the additional parking.
Could I?
Okay. Elaborate for a moment if you want to do on the, just the catch facing on the tight place. One of the things I was looking at, or should be looking at, no.
You don't want flooding into the field or onto the road or anything, and we're doubling the size of the parking lot. So, I understand. I'm trying to address that with the catch facing. Can you just expand on that a little bit?
Yes, the underground drainage system hasn't been completed, designed, but there will be catch facing. So, right now, the water is actually running in this direction. It's not going to go out to the road. So, we're designing a drainage system that's not 100% completed yet. There was a budget put on the estimate of $60,000 for the drainage system. And Kevin Martin, the engineer, can talk a little bit more about that. But there will be drainage, because the water that's collected now is actually dispersed under the field and everything. So, it's our intention to, the extra spot will be handled with the drainage that we're putting in and not tied into the existing drainage of the parking lot now.
So, there won't be more water going into the field?
No, absolutely not.
I have a couple of questions. Want me to ask one at a time, or you want to go ahead? So, can you confirm how long the town would be waiving taxes for this project?
It would be for the life of the lease.
The life of the lease?
Yes.
Which is how long?
Forty years.
And who's going to maintain the seal coat? Would that be part of what Green Development do? Would the town approve this as a cost?
The reason we're seal coating is for the striping, for the additional. There's probably going to be six handicap spots. We're going to finish the calculation. So, the reason why we're seal coating the whole parking lot is to bring the existing parking lot to look like the new parking lot. And then I could stripe it all, and we plan on striping the baseball field, I mean, the basketball field. Parking lot seal coating, that's in our proposal. We're seal coating everything right out to the road and restriping while handicapped. But the parking lot would be, when we're done, we'd warranty it for the year. But the parking lot would be your responsibility. The canopy would be 100% our responsibility.
So, a one-year warranty?
Yeah.
And would that, would that one-year warranty apply to anything else in terms of construction of the parking lot? So, if there was, if there were cracks, or if a piece had collapsed, or anything like that, that would also be under warranty for just a year?
Absolutely. Everything, from the fencing, from the drainage, from the trees are all warranted. Our landscape, you know, so there's a whole tree line that's going up. Trees, we're responsible to keep that growing. I have to get the grass reestablished, so from the parking lot out to the main road will all be new grass, hydroseeded around, because once the construction's done, that's all going to get disturbed. So, all that watering, maintaining, any cracks in the parking lot will all be handled by us under a warranty. And if something happened a couple of years down the line, that there was a structural issue, we would still be here. We don't see anything, any issues that we would have at all on anything here. The electric is, to the concession stand, all the telephone poles are being removed and putting that under it. The electrical contract will have a warranty on that installation of that. We would warranty the duct bank and everything, so we take care of all issues for the first year. And that's kind of standard on any project that you would do, to have a year warranty on everything.
Forgive my ignorance, but with the, with the solar panels being 18 feet off the ground now, would they, so they'd be like you see on a solar field almost, right?
Say that again.
They'd be like how you see on a solar field almost, but you'd be able to park underneath it?
You'd be able to park it. The 18 number, so the parking lot has two elevations. You have the lower elevation and the higher elevation. The 18 foot is really the lower elevation.
Okay.
So, the higher elevation, so I want to make sure that I'm clearing 14-foot minimum clear space on the higher parking lot, so if a bus wants to fall under it, somebody's under it, it's clearing it there. By doing that, it's making the lower side taller.
And again, forgive my ignorance, but is there a weight limit on the solar panels? So, if there is a huge lizard, or something like that, there's a, you know, two-foot squall of snow on it?
So, the whole solar, the whole solar canopy and everything is stamped by a Rhode Island engineer that designed it. It covers all snow loads. We actually cover the same snow loads that the building here would cover for that. So, they, and it's an unoccupied area, but it's a parking lot, but we follow all the snow loads that are required for a state building permit.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Now, with, I think Ms. Allen's brought up a great point about having potentially some traffic control, a traffic light, right down the street here at the Primrose Fire Station. There's a traffic light that is usually just a blinking yellow, but when the trucks are coming out, then you have the red lights, the trucks can pull right out. So, maybe something that could be established. Would it be something that you could tie into the solar power itself?
It's the, the cost of traffic control isn't really the cost of the power part. It's the infrastructure.
Yeah.
If you put a traffic, we do, we do a lot of traffic control work and I think, you know, you probably increase another $200,000 for traffic control at both entrances, because you have to put systems in that lets people know.
Yeah.
So, the fire department hits the switch, we're coming out, everybody stops. You're really not going to have that same type of atmosphere up there, because you can just stop all the other traffic. So, you have to have, you have to have wires in the asphalt, signals, signal boxes to say, okay, so long on, so long off. So, you know, it can be designed and everything, but it would increase the cost of the whole project substantially.
I mean, I see it as a safety issue, so for me, that would be worth it. But in the safety issue vein, so you had mentioned this being a phase one with the lot being installed. But then, and unless I heard this wrong, and I'm sorry if I did, but then there would be a new exit or new egress or ingress or whatever, not constructed for another year.
That would be constructed soon as my curb cut was approved by the state of Rhode Island. But the process and all state government right now is just really drawn out the timing. So, we could wait for that to the end. It's not an issue that they're not going to approve it, but the drawings, the engineering for it, we would submit to them. They would come out and look at it. And then they would approve that, that that would put the parking lot. Hopefully, I would get it by next year, the curb cut, and then we could put the second entrance out. So, it's not that the cost of the second entrance isn't really the issue for Green. We do a lot of donating of property and different items. The second edge is more of the timing of getting the full parking lot in at this stage right now. So, you could wait for that, if that was a choice as you wanted.
Yeah, for this, I'm not so much worried about the cost aspect of it. For this, I'm more worried that if we're going to double the parking lot, and we're going to have twice the spaces, and God forbid there's ever a need for the parking lot to be evacuated right away. Now, we have still that, just one exit, but maybe double the cars. So, you know, operationally, I just wonder if there's any sort of way that, well, go ahead.
No, that's okay. But I mean, if you look at your parking lot here, and you count the spots that you have here across the building, you have one exit coming in and out. I don't think it's a safety issue. I think it's more of a convenient issue that half the people can go out one direction, half the people can go out the other direction. You know, if you're going to have everybody going in one direction and everybody going out the other direction, that second exit, but what you're going to find out is you're going to have people coming in and out of both exits at the same time, which, you know, that's in design, DOT will look at that too, and possibly make an income in an outcome exit, which then wouldn't evacuate the parking lot any faster. But you'd have two points of impact out on the main road. You have your existing one that people are coming in and out of. And then, when that's getting backed up, people start coming in and out of the second one. That would be part of the DOT curb cut permit.
Right, but that's, I may have not explained myself well. I apologize for that. But, so my worry is that if we have a new end of the parking lot, that's like, say, the parking lot ended, and we expand it all the way over here, but we still have that exit right here. Are we setting ourselves up for liability, having all these new, having not had a plan to establish the parking lot at the same time establishing other safety methods that may be needed?
I probably think Kevin Martin, I might have to ask him if he can answer that question. But I, again, will look at what the amount of cars can come in and entrance.
Okay.
On that one.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of the high school entrance. There's one entrance in from Greenville Road, or the second one further down that parking lot. Trying to remember offhand. Yeah, I think what we drew up, just had the one entrance in, but you could turn around the end of the parking lot and continue back to the entrance. Just like what's there, basically, a mirror image of that, an extension of that. You know, I'm not a traffic CD expert, civil engineer, but not on the traffic side of things too much. I think it's something that would have to be looked at, weighed with DOTs for us, the one-way in, one-way out scenario. They're very familiar with their roads. You probably have to do, want to do a pre-application with them, talk through it and get their feedback.
Great. And I, just one last thing on this. Just because we have the lot set up this way now, doesn't mean it's smart to replicate that.
I know, I understand.
Okay. So, that's all I've got. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Following up on something that Mr. Jones said. So, just to be clear, if something happened, whatever, and a panel came down, you guys would be the ones that we'd call, and you guys would come and fix it?
Yeah, we'd have to have insurance, obviously, in place, and you'd be responsible for anything, any issues that come up, whether it be electrical, physical, something, you know, windstorm, something happens, and we've got to go out and check it. That's on us.
Okay.
Yep.
Sorry, would that insurance policy also cover any cars that may be damaged by a falling panel?
I believe so, yeah. I mean, I think the town would be, what, additional insured, I would expect, Mark? And then, we'd have that coverage if, yeah, if anything were to occur.
Mr. Cora has a question.
So, you know, it was a bit challenging when we, when we had the concession stand built, right? The fences were locked, nobody could really get in, or it's very limited. That was taken care of. The concession stand looks phenomenal. Do you foresee any disruption installing the parking lot expanding, as well as taking out, like you said, those median spaces?
The, I mean, I think it's something we could coordinate on and develop a plan that would work for both. I mean, there's some, some stages of the project that will be impacted in terms of accessibility for paving, if we're, you know, doing things like that. But with the expansion is, we probably could have, we'd have a construction entrance off the existing parking lot, where we could do our grading work, our drainage work, our curbing work. And depending on what time of year it is, and we know there's activities to work around, whether it's a football game, or spring, spring sports, track and field, whatever. I think it would be easier, because we're kind of away from that entrance. We could keep that open and accessible.
So, you're going to darn it, and then essentially cut it over, basically?
Yeah, I think, I mean, there's going to be some stages where we're going to need to be overlapping, but a lot of it could be done, certainly the clearing, the stumping, things like that, to be done on the far side.
I just have a couple of questions, if everybody's all set. So, lighting, I know that you said the existing lighting would be taken down. The new lighting, would there be new lighting?
Yeah, so, under the canopy, the canopy is going to have lighting on both ends of it. It'll actually, your lighting now is a bit of the parking lot. So, there'll be lighting under the canopy, which will cast straight out like the parking lot, much more than you have it right now. So, at the bottom of the canopy, on the low end of the parking lot, we're lighting there. That will put candlelight in this, then on the other side of the parking lot. So, the canopy will have lighting that is being drawn off of the actual, the lighting will be drawn off the power off of the canopy. It will be part of the component of the canopy.
And who's responsible for the lighting?
We would handle, anything that touches the canopy, we'd be responsible for. So, the foundation, everything, we would be responsible for.
So, I know that you mentioned you're going to go from approximately 58 spots to 116. Can we go to 116? Can we go to a hundred and fifty? Just asking that question, so can you expand it more?
You, you could expand it more, um, if, if you felt. I think the intent was just to try to keep it from the neighboring houses. That's why we did all the planting around for it. And, um, you know, we're not counting the existing basketball spots too right now. So we're only counting the front, so where the basketball spots are on in that calculation right now. I think if you added them in, I think you're close to a hundred and fifty right now with those spots. Could you make it bigger? We could make, we could make the parking lot bigger. It would be more, um, drainage, we're starting to get into a larger footprint. We're trying to stay in a footprint that is, um, you know, that would fit the area for the drainage and all that.
I think it was Mr. Gerton who talked about, um, the pathway from here going up to the new field. Is there anything that you can do with putting, you know, making a pathway that's, that's better, um, with asphalt and possibly the lighting maybe that you take down? Do something with that?
We, we could set that up or we could set up another type of lighting for the pathway. I mean, that's not, I walked it through, it's just a dirt path. We could clean it, we just did one at Johnson and Wales, a nice, um, it wasn't asphalt, it was a nice stone dust that they have the walking track that let people walk around all the waterfront and everything. So there is not a problem, you know, making that better. We couldn't make it handicap because of the
Right.
pitch, but we can definitely upkeep that.
Hopefully double the spaces, hopefully that'll be helpful.
Yeah.
Uh, I got a question, it's kind of out there, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Is it possible to set something up inside the high school or the middle school? Some kind of monitor, so it almost could be like a learning project, so the kids could see, uh, look at how much, you know, today that, that parking lot is generating X amount of, uh, of voltage. Today it's raining, obviously, now, just something that so they can actually look and see what's happening up there.
We're currently working, we're, we're supposed to do it for the Dunkin' Donuts Center. And, um, for, for all our customers, we're currently working on software that we could put screens in and we could, we could actually monitor all the energy being produced in the town and give different things. We can monitor just the parking lot, we're working on that. It's been part of a goal that we've been trying to get the software to upgrade and we, we finally have our software where we can tell you exactly what we, we know exactly what we're producing. But we have to give it in a way that somebody that's reading it is going to understand, um, what it's producing that day. So if we're, if I'm powering up globally thirty-four thousand homes, you know, that's an easy thing to calculate. You know, two hundred kilowatts is a very small amount, we would have to tie it to something in the school and say, at this time, we're powering up the, all the refrigerators in the cafeteria, so. But yes, but we, we would plan on doing that and, um, in that it would be easier to say, you know, North Smithfield's, our solar arrays that are in globally, you know, you have the school, but globally, this is what they're producing and they can see it, we, we see it every minute, what the production is, they can see on a cloudy day, what the production is, and then we can give them some comparisons. We, we were planning on doing that, I think we talked about it three years ago too, um, and we've been working on it.
With the century, do you think there'd be a, a space for that in the school?
And, and there's, there's a lot of different things that we can introduce, it, it's just what the school can take from us. But there's a lot of stuff that can be sent to them, they, they can see a PD syst model exactly what it is, um, you know, or when we fire drone over it, we'll show the heat from the pianos, and you'll see one piano might not be red, and you'll see that piano is broken, like things like that, we could broadcast. If there was a, a class that was happening, we got it solar and they wanted some information, you know, we could pump information to them or give them a zip drive that to walk them through what's actually happening. You know, almost live at, at, on the moment, yes.
Thank you.
Welcome. That wasn't a long, I don't think that was too big of a pitch.
All right, well, thanks.
I just have one more question. So just to confirm, you said that the electricity is going to go directly into the grid, so the school grounds the field, nothing will benefit from this electricity being?
The, the, the school's benefiting from
From the value of the property.
The value of the property and all that. The power to the school is already engaged in buying net metering credits from another party. This powering, so that would really interfere with, I think, contract that you already have. And the two hundred kilowatts is not a, this building for two hundred kilowatts is really, isn't really a major factor, that's why the lights, we're handling the lights and everything, but that will go right to the grid. And that's what's really funding the total project. So we'd go into a regrowth program with National Grid. And they would pay somewhere between ten and twelve cents a kilowatt hour. You're probably getting a much better deal with your, um, net metering credits projects that you're getting power from the school right now.
So what kind of value are you saying that this, this project would generate dollar-wise electricity, I guess for you, for a year?
I don't have that number exactly.
You must, you said you know.
No, I, I know what the leases on it.
No, I'm talking about the, the electricity.
So that, I mean, the price for that right now in the program is like twenty cents, so let's say it goes three hundred thousand, ten probably with six thousand ish a year.
So, so the revenue?
If we win the contracts, we have to compete in for, we can compete with every other two hundred kW solar project in the state to get that contract. And if we don't get one, then we would sell it to another, you know, school district or town or something, go into the virtual net metering program.
So basically the minimum is sixty thousand and obviously utilities always go up, so.
Well, no, that's
Six for twenty years, so we bid into these, uh, we bid into, uh, a, a program that's run by the utility and it's, and they set ceiling prices per size, so really big projects are like ten cents, smaller projects, because they're much more expensive, are, are paid a higher rate. I, I have it on my house, I'm not sure what program other people are in, but, um, on a residential rate, it's a hundred and thirty cents. So it depends on what size, each side has a ceiling and we have to compete against the other products that are sized similarly underneath that ceiling price. So it might be even less than twenty now, but it's around there.
But the thing that, so the sixty thousand in revenue has to pay the debt service on the project. And the canopy can't withstand, a true canopy can't withstand a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a lease payment over forty years. Really what we're proposing is a donation to the town. So if I was putting, we're doing multiple canopies right now. And a lot of people say, why would you put a canopy in my parking lot and only give me six thousand dollars a year for the rest of your life? But the, the revenue that we have handles debt service, insurance, maintenance, all of that, and any, any claims or interest, so we pass the handle, all those costs, um, for the entire project. And the project definitely, and, and anybody will vouch, um, that those canopy could never handle a five hundred thousand dollar parking lot on it. So the parking lot should have been donated, um, to the town.
So the lease payment through the same system, we give up each hundred thousand. And I just want to point you, the other, the reason that you're not seeing, everyone wants you solar canopies, but you're not seeing a lot of them. It's just for two years in a row now, the Public Utilities Commission did not approve to that program. A few years ago, uh, there was a five cent adder, so any solar, if there was a solar canopy, instead of a ground mount, they'd give you five cent extra to try and encourage it, but the PUC stopped that. So there, you're not seeing a lot of these projects because they're much more expensive than a traditional ground mount. But it makes a lot more common sense because you're not, you're putting them over a parking lot, um, in an urban district area. So they're, they're far more expensive, so.
Also, did you mention that the lighting that, um, put forth by the canopy will be given up slightly and won't be affecting the school anything?
No, the, the lighting that's lighting in the parking lot is coming out of the canopy, which should be, is going to be more than sufficient for the parking lot, much more than you have now, um, will be being drawn off of the actual canopy. So the canopy uses power, power's coming in, coming out, the lights will be tied right into the canopy, there'll be on sensors. We might, it, it might be on like motion sensors, so they're not on every night, so the intent isn't to have the, the parking lot lit every single night if there's not an event. So that would be programmed into it. So if there is an event, when they turn the lights on at the school, they could turn the lights on at the canopy. We could set it up that it's done remotely, so what we've been putting in is sensors. So if the canopy's dark and somebody comes out of the hospital at two o'clock in the morning, walks under the canopy, that, that's a situation that would always be lit, but comes out of a, an area into a canopy at Ocean State, then the lights would come on when you actually walk towards a canopy, it'll, it'll sense you. Sort of like what you see in a lot of homes, where they pull up to your garage, the outside lights come on.
Mrs. Zlofski, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. President. Many of my questions, I was formulating while the, the boards were posing the same questions over and over again. Something that was thematic was the safety. And, uh, what I, I have a little problem trying to process here is the phase of asking for the physical alteration firm to pack. Would that not be advantageous to do it concurrently as we look for traffic mitigating lights out there? Because we're dealing with a ride dot. I'd like to see that process start sooner than later because of the delays that the state's facing. So is there some type of assurance to say that we're going to do one phase and then a second phase? Sorry, but your, your operation can be up and putting electricity into the system? And we don't get the ingress and egress the second one?
I think first up, we would put in a, we would put, Green would put in the contract that we would, if it's approved, we would apply by what the state, um, wants for the egress. I, I find it, 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 it's going to be a reach, I think, for the second entrance, we, we could get it. Did you stop on traffic control at both entrances? You're going to have more of a nuisance, I think, at the site, um, at that time. But you will end up with a permit unless the state feels that there's more than adequate entrance on and off the road. So if DOT feels that, well, the, the hundred and, let's just call it a hundred and fifty of existing does not need a second entrance to go out on a main road, they might deny that second entrance out if they feel that it's not properly, um, isn't needed or isn't wanted to have the second entrance into the ball field. So that would come in the permit, but Kevin, immediately what you said is that we would do a pre-app with DOT to find out what, what they're thinking, what they're looking for. And then we would take those, um, suggestions and put them in a plan and resubmit them to you. But ultimately, um, they're going to look at the traffic flow and they're going to ultimately look at, does the parking lot need another entrance in and out? You know, so that, that's really, I can't guarantee that DOT will give you a second entrance if they feel that it's more of a nuisance if you have an entrance already leaving the parking lot, that's.
Fair enough, they, they must make their plan, but we'll be looking at whatever's submitted, of course. Okay, the other piece of this too, during your presentation, I wasn't quite sure, I heard, uh, two hundred kilowatts mentioned. How much capacity, what's the faceplate going to show in that job? If we're going to create fifty-eight parking spaces, how much energy is going to be created?
It, it, Ken had just said that the two hundred kilowatts are going to create three hundred thousand kilowatts a year.
Okay.
All right, which would, uh, she used the number twenty cents, which is giving you your sixty thousand dollars a year. And the canopy, the canopy, you know, is giving you the capital. I think, um, The canopy costs with the construction, the canopy is going to cost a little over a million dollars to actually build the canopy. So you'll, and you'll be financing sixty percent of the cost of the canopy. And then the rest will be equity, because all our, all our solar arrays, we do sixty to sixty-five percent. So that would be the, the cost of the canopy. Naturally, we amortize over, they're only going to run it over maybe fifteen years, um, to pay back the debt. It's a very, they're very tight, um, canopy is a very difficult project to build right now, um, because of the economics.
I have one more question.
Okay.
So as we're talking about the two entrances, I noted, it didn't show an entrance on the photo, so, on the drawing. So if we did do an entrance, can we look at that, that drawing again and see how it would hinder some of the parking? Like would we lose some parking spots, like?
Absolutely. There you go. So, go back one. So if you look at that, if we did another entrance, you would lose, you would lose the distance between that island and those parking spots leaving. So I would say you lose three parking spots that are going to, that you'd be leaving out and you'd have some curbing in an island. So with the island, and you would have about sixteen feet, very similar than when you look at the top of the screen, the existing going, lines up with the island, so that would be adjusted, you would probably lose three parking spots. You might gain one parking spot, spot on the south side, because we would probably make it, give it a little bit more space between the, between the island and open like you have at the top.
You're kind of pointing like, kind of, I don't know what you mean.
I think, is this my mouse? Right here, here we go. I got, I got my mouse there, right there, there we go.
Lining it up this way.
Yeah, so this would go out, so this line here would probably come down here a little bit, which we can plan for, and then you would lose these spots here leaving. And then you would have an island that would actually, just like the island up above, like there, you have a little island that comes in, so those are the spots that you would lose over here.
Real quick though, sorry to interrupt, but didn't you mention that this second egress was going to be phase two of this project?
We're going to submit for a phase two egress on it, but we're telling you that we would do a phase two. The intent was to try to build the parking lot this year and get it up in operation. And then why we're submitting, we would submit, um, for a second egress out of the parking lot to DOT.
So there were, so there wasn't a phase two coming into tonight, that was just something you mentioned?
No, no, we, we spoke about it, um, as a, as a team and as a staff looking at the project as a complete, that we were always, we were planning and it, it was brought to my attention that we would probably like a second entrance out. We listened to what people are saying in the community and that, so we discussed that earlier as bringing a phase two second entrance out. And we can wait on, um, th- th- there's, there's a few things that are playing for the project to start now instead of a year. Right now, come March, every one of these projects are prevailing wage. So that means all my economics for this project go in the hole. Right now, we're really donating you a parking lot to put a canopy up, but the economics today don't work. Once everything's prevailing wage, that means the parking lot would be prevailing wage. That means the canopy will be prevailing wage, so the federal government put a mandate in that all renewable energy after March thirtieth is prevailing wage. So the, the intent is just to stop the project, get the canopy stopped being built and, and get the, donate the project to the town.
Are there other phases that you've been discussing that aren't on this presentation?
Are there other what?
Phases?
No.
We, we only use, we use the term, we use the term phase two, not as a separate project, just, just to demonstrate to you that it was our, it, it's our intent to apply for that
it's our intent to apply for that DOT permit, but if it happens, it, it, it will probably happen at a different time in order to get you the parking spaces that you need more quickly. So it's the same exact project, we just offered it in that order in order to give the school district the benefit of those additional parking spots to do that.
I'm just concerned because it feels like this presentation's incomplete. Because if you had mentioned to me earlier that the second egress would have taken three spots, that would have been important to know. It would have been good to have that listed already in this, if it was something you were talking about before coming in tonight. So I'm just, that's why I'm just starting to get a little worried. Is, is there anything else in terms of phases or information that, that we're going to leave here tonight not knowing?
Ultimately, what you're getting here is you get an parking lot donated by Green Development. And we do donations in multiple towns. The economics on this deal do not even remotely pay up. After building the concession stand, after looking tonight where there's not a lot going up, your parking lot's already full. So we brought it and said, we can do this to enhance the area. It was brought to my attention about all the parking out on the road. And being an entrepreneur in business, I'm always looking for another place. We do a lot of scholarship funds. We do a lot of different things. We're building, working on a, a kennel for another town that we're doing work in, just because it's, we try to be good neighbors. But the economics on the project are not remotely.
I'm not discounting what Green Development does. I think it's wonderful. And I, I think, you know, there's a lot of good in this project. But I just want to make sure that, I mean, you have both, you have both town boards and the town administrator sitting here. Before we leave tonight, I really want to make sure that we have all the information. We were talking earlier about this second egress and it wasn't mentioned that we'd lose three parking spaces. Thank you, Ms. Al, for bringing it up. I didn't even think of it. So I would have left here thinking, all right, they're going to do that, that second egress in a year. And then, well, would the parking spaces already be established? Then it's taken away when, when the egress is made? I mean, so that's, that's where I'm getting concerned is that, you know, there's a lot of good in this project. I just want to make sure we have the full picture when we go into it. And nobody is discounting all the good that Green Development does. But, and we won't, I mean, I, I think it'd be great to have the expansion on the parking lot, but I don't want to do it with incomplete information.
I wouldn't at this time. I wouldn't build the parking lot if it was drawn for the second egress out until I had my second permit. Right? Which, um, so we would design that. I can show you phase two. So the active, meaning phase two, the second portion with the curb cut. But right now, I don't believe that you need a second entrance out to meet the code and requirements for the parking lot. You're asking me for an additional entrance that egress or entrance in to the parking lot. But I think when the engineer looks at it, they may not think it warrants a second entrance. So we're trying to build you a parking lot that's getting you your spots and getting the people off of the road. Really what it is. But there is nothing else that's not on the journey.
So anyone else? I mean, I, I think this is a, a great idea. So thank you for bringing it to us. I think that, I don't believe that we are prepared to do anything tonight. Other than, I, I, I mean, I think that if we could have, this is just my recommendation and obviously, the school committee can do what it pleases, but to maybe send this to the facility manager, this idea, the business manager, the solicitor, and the superintendent to come back with what we can or cannot do. Whether this, there needs to be a bid, whether we need to do something. And we can have a report back. The only thing, do we want to, in concept, agree to it tonight so that they can move forward? If they feel it needs to be bid out, they can go forward before that, before we be, but we would make the ultimate decision. So that's just what everybody wants to do.
You're saying like a, like a ten?
In concept.
Concept. Can you resend us that proposal?
Yes, and we'll put it on, we'll put it on our website, right Superintendent? We put this up, okay.
Superintendent?
I'm sorry, can I just throw something out just as I'm looking at this because we're getting distracted with the second egress.
Which, believe me, I think would be fantastic. And, and you're right, I, I've looked at, especially like the parking at NSCS and trying to get in and out of that facility. Especially on a night where there's an open house and we have spillover parking here and shuttle buses going back and forth. And when you leave NSCS, it's great if you're taking a right-hand turn because there's only one lane as you leave. But when you want to take a left-hand turn and you're dealing with traffic, it sort of backs everyone up. In looking at this right here, one of the things I was thinking, I don't know if it's possible, is instead of taking away these three parking spaces at some point, if we grab fifteen feet or so down at the end for the second phase, now I know you're going to have some tree plantings and such, but if that were factored in and maybe not done immediately, it'd be the kind of thing that the tree plant, if you go a little further out and then we save this space for that second phase. In the event, we need an egress based on a state survey, Department of Transportation survey.
Good idea. Do we want to, again, what do we, how do we want to proceed? I mean, I think that, you know, there's no question that we need our, our administrators to take a look at this and give us a presentation back as to whether we can do it, zoning, should do it, those type of things. And then we could, you know, take an action at next meeting. But I'm just wondering if we shouldn't just in concept, ask them to move forward so that if they felt an RFP was needed, they could go out and do it without us. But that's it. They couldn't award it, obviously. So I'm just wondering, how far do we want to go? I know time is an issue, right? So if we're going to, if it's next spring, it's not going to work. And we need to do it sooner rather than later. We want to do that.
I just don't want to cut you off. One thing that Superintendent was saying, the town has power engineering. We can, and Kevin just suggested that does engineering for the town. We can meet with them very quickly to go over this and get, and they can give you a recommendation how they feel about the second entrance and, and the process for that. We can't guarantee you, and that's what I was just talking to Kevin, that they're going to give you, DOT is going to give you a second entrance with that size of a parking lot. But we can work with power on that too.
So I think it's, it's our philosophy, I believe, is that we'll, we would probably go out to RFP. So Green may get it, although if they're giving this much up, I would think that they would. But we would have to go through a formal procedure. But again, that would be our administrators advising us on how to move forward.
Mr. Chair, so can we just say, put it out to them right now because this is not our original meeting, so we'll be meeting in a couple of weeks.
Right.
So we could just ask them to jump, look at this on that Tuesday, two weeks, is that going to, I know it's a rush here, but.
No, 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 not at all. But is, is it two weeks or is it three weeks? All I'm saying is if they feel that it needs to be an RFP, then I would like to have them jump on that again. We don't have to award it. At the end of the day, if we say no, then we don't have to award it. But again, if you want to wait to three weeks, that's up to.
I think getting the information now is worthwhile. So, you know, I mean, that was, that's why we're here tonight, right? So I think, yeah, if we put it, if we put it forward, I mean, does that make sense, Mr. Superintendent and Mr. Administrator to, yeah, all right.
So I'll, I'll, you want me to entertain a motion to have the facility manager, the business manager, the solicitor and the superintendent take a look at the situation, obviously contact the town planner, zoning if they need to. And if necessary, put out an RFP.
I'd like to get this going on the road. It protects us. It's not, you know, do or die.
Right.
And it will be ahead of the day.
So that would be done in concept?
Absolutely.
That emotion, I mean, you make a motion. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, Mr. Gliozzi on the process. So the reason the council is involved tonight is ultimately the decision lies with the school committee on whether or not to go forward on this project. But if you do decide to go forward on this project, at some point it would have to come back before the council for the tax treaty. And that's why we're here with you tonight, watching, observing the presentation and learning as much about it as we can.
Great. No, I just heard that, that it's in violation of zoning, so we should probably get an opinion.
Okay, I think on our end, there is no vote to be taken. So, you know, we're good right now.
So do you want to conclude your meeting and then we'll move on to executive session?
Well, we just typically would move on to the next agenda item.
Yes. Oh. Okay. So do you want to lead, John?
I'm sorry?
You want to lead the first, or do you want me to go first?
You can go first.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to go to executive session under Rhode Island General Law's forty-two, forty-six, five, A two and four. Legal update and advice on potential litigation and investigation concerning hazing allegation incident at North Smithville High School.
So moved.
Motion's been made. Is there a second? Second. Uh, is there any discussion regarding this? Roll call please. Yes.
Yes.
We're in executive session.
I would entertain a motion to discuss my counsel about the action. I wrote out a general law forty-two dash forty-six dash five and A two and four legal update and advice on potential litigation and investigation concerning hazing allegation incident. Do we have a second? Roll call please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Where do you, where do you hold your executive session?
Superintendent? Superintendent, where are we going for executive session?
No, I think we're going to go upstairs, I think. Bobby, do you want to begin?
Yes. So I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session. Motion's been made. Is there a second? Second. Uh, roll call please. Uh, yes.
Yes. Yes.
We're out of executive session. I'll entertain a motion to seal the record. Motion's been made. Is there a second? Inseparable. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. For the record, we have made no votes in executive session. Is there any further business? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made. Is there a second? Inseparable. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Good. Very adjourned.
Uh, before we, uh, before we go, I just want to thank you guys for meeting with us tonight. It was a lot of fun. Let's do it again sometime.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks a lot. I think it went very well. It was a very informative meeting. No, we are not. Uh, I will also at this time entertain a motion to come out of this session and seal the minutes and indicate no votes are taken. Is there a second? Roll call please.
Yes.
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 Yes. And now we have to go back into executive session.
President, make a motion that we recess into executive session for discussion by counsel about other action on Rhode Island General Law forty-two dash forty-six dash five A two. Sessions contained to clarify no litigation, work sessions contained to litigation, potential litigation. One Islander Solar LLC, Joseph and Sandra Oteah, a few of the decision of the Town of North Smithville Planning Board regarding the denial asked to plan for proper locates at zero and eight fifty high line of road. Flat sixteen, hot eighteen and nineteen, zoning district RA.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes.